Welcome as of one to February tenth, two thousand and twenty five, Town about not regular session. If we could please stand for the federal allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
Our federal allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the great unity of our hearts.
Let's remain standing for a moment of silence, continuing memory those who were so affected by the storm and thus were affected by the fires on the west coast. Anyone have any announcements?
We are ethics statement in accordance with code of ethics adopted by the council. All council members have a duty to conduct the affairs of the governing board in an open and public manner free of conflicts of interest. Is there any item on the agenda the outcome of which will have a direct substantial and ready identifiable financial impact for any council member, his or her family or close business associates?
No.
Does any council member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before this council today?
No.
There being that all council members have a duty and obligation to vote. We have one proclamation this evening recognizing Black History Month, whereas the town of Black Mountain takes pride in recognizing February two thousand and twenty five as Black History Month, celebrating many notable contributions that people of African descent have made to our community, state and country, and whereas this year's Black History Month theme of African Americans, of African Americans and labor as designated by the Association for the Study of African American Life and History focuses on the various and profound ways that work of all kinds intersect with the collective experiences of black people, and whereas under the strong leadership of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., the battle for equal rights extended not only to not only black people but to other minorities, and whereas in nineteen seventy six President Gerald Ford formally designated February as Black History Month, and now therefore I, Archbishop Tilla Vice Mayor of the town of Black Mountain, do hereby proclaim this month of February twenty twenty five as Black History Month in the town of Black Mountain, and call upon the people of Black Mountain to observe this month with appropriate programs, activities and reflections. Signed, Archbishop Tilla, Vice Mayor. Do we have any citizen comments? I believe you did. Lynn Swan. Just remember to tell your address and you have three minutes.
Thank you Vice Mayor for telling. Town Council, I'm Lynn Swan. I live at one oh one South Park Lane. As a senior resident of Black Mountain, I am here tonight to beseech the town council to make renovation or relocation of the Lakeview Senior Center a top priority in post-Helene recovery. When I heard that it might be two years before the Lakeview Senior Center was available, quite frankly, I panicked. The senior center needs to be a top priority. The Lakeview Senior Center has been my Monday through Friday, nine AM to three PM activity center for the last ten years. I've gone there not only for the lunch that is available through the Council on Aging, but also for health information sessions, societal snack and learn, music, exercises, games and socialization. Not being able to participate in Tai Chi, chair yoga, chair volleyball, which I really miss, cards, dominoes, rummy cube, it's been detrimental to my overall well-being. There are other activities which are important to other seniors like quilting and la joie and bingo, perhaps someone here tonight also wants to express to you what they miss about the senior center. We've been without our social interaction and senior wellness activities for five months because of Helene. We understand that, but we really need for the town council to understand how important the senior center is to a large segment of your community. I understand that the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services mandates a senior center be provided, so I sincerely urge you to make it your top priority to either restore Lakeview Senior Center or relocate the Black Mountain Senior Center so that we seniors can get back to our healthy activities in less than six months. May God guide your hearts and minds and may your decisions be honest and principled with a wisdom, prudence and discernment. In the name of Jesus, I ask this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Miss Swan.
My name is Jeffrey Hutchins. I live at five zero one Azalea Avenue facing Lake Tomahawk Park. Diane and I have lived in Black Mountain full-time since two thousand and eight. We intend to live in Black Mountain the rest of our lives. I am the author of children's books about Denton the Dragon, one of which is now displayed around Lake Tomahawk. First, I want to thank the members of this town council, our honorable mayor and the employees of the town, including our first responders and our sanitation workers for your heroic actions during and after Hurricane Helene to save our lives, our businesses and our way of life. You did so much behind the scenes, not looking for praise. Thank you for rising to that occasion. Now I must ask you to rise to a separate occasion. Like so many patriotic Americans, I am dismayed by current actions of the federal government. Federal departments control distribution of some of the money that now supports our beloved town. Some bad actors appear poised to use that money as a weapon to force states, counties and municipalities to meet criteria that have never been required in America and which I consider un-American. Republicans, Democrats and independents should all be alarmed. The feds are trying to control and reshape America in many ways, but today I focus on those actions directed against diversity, equity and inclusion. Diversity recognizes that nothing works as well when all the people running anything look the same and share the same background. This town council functions well in part because of its diversity. Equity means fairness. Is our country really saying that fairness is not an American value? Inclusion means everyone gets a chance in America, not a guarantee of wealth or success, but a chance. That is a core American value that I learned as a boy scout. I am one of the inventors of closed captioning that is now seen on television and computer screens everywhere. Captions help everyone, not just people with hearing loss. I feel strongly about the rights of people with any disability. This council must be sure to protect our town's citizens with disabilities and not let them fall victim to vigilantes tilting at the energy producing windmills called diversity, equity and inclusion. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeff Hutchins. Ms. Marcel de Hamanas.
Hello, good evening, and my name is Anna Marcel de Hamanas. I live at four zero four South Okanichi, and I want to thank everybody for saying, you know, giving us the opportunity to speak, and I've already sent you something so you probably know what I'm going to speak about, but I too want to thank you for all the work you've done, especially this year. You do a lot of work all the time, but this year obviously has been a lot. I'm speaking tonight not just for myself, although I'm speaking for myself. I'm a seven and a half year resident here. I volunteer in the community and I have been kind of dismayed sometimes that a place where I moved because I thought it had certain qualities doesn't always live up to that. So I'm a part of a small group of Black Mountain folks that are working in conjunction with a larger group of Buncombe County persons, and that all connects with SURGE, the National Standing Up for Racial Justice, that has started, well, it has programs all the time, but the new program that Buncombe County has become a part of is to, it's called gearing up, and it was for what we know is coming and is already here in our, in our community as well as everybody else's, but we're asking town councils, the county commissioners, school board members, faith community members to take a pledge of some kind that, the pledge itself comes from, from SURGE, but it's been kind of worked around for Buncombe County, and I sent you a copy of something that would be something like a resolution that would essentially pledge to show up to protect the rights, safety and dignity of all people in our community and resist the undemocratic and discriminatory actions with consistent peaceful resistance, like a solidarity kind of action from all of us. The purpose of this pledge is of course first to assure the people that feel the most threatened, and I assure you there are people in our community that feel threatened. Second, though, it is to all of us, so I'm kind of glad that there are lots of people here, because I want all of my community, all of my neighbors to be ready to stand up for justice. I mean, we haven't had to do that a lot in our lives, and we do, I think we do now more than ever.
Thank you.
And third.
I'm sorry, that's your three. Thank you.
Okay.
Ms. Miles.
My address is one one eight two O U S seventy West in Black Mountain, and I would like to thank all the council members and the mayor for allowing me to speak. As you can tell, I'm not an orator, but I do have some concerns about the senior center. I know some of these things have been addressed already, but I'd like to expound them just a little bit. We really appreciate the efforts that you have put forth to support the senior center in the past. You've helped us before Helene started with additional funding so we could feed more meals per week, and I thank you for that, and I thank you for all the efforts that you put forth in providing parking for the seniors that are on walkers and wheelchair and canes that can't walk over from the pavilion to the senior center because the poor people have taken parking spaces. Thank you for your efforts to help with that, and I know that that's not available for right now, but we need our senior center back, and we have our meals have been started back, used to pick up and take home, but we need as seniors, we need the fellowship, we need the camaraderie, we need the information that we get through the speakers that come in about twice a month to speak to us about things that concern seniors, senior citizens, and also new programs that are becoming available and changing, the programs, the insurance programs and things that are available that change each year. We have speakers that come in to speak to us about that, and without the senior center, we would not be having that information available to us. Also, once a month, Health Bridge Pharmacy comes and speaks to us about medical, medical responsibilities and medications that are harmful to us, and they give us our vaccinations for COVID and the flu shots in September, October, and without the senior center, some of our seniors will not have access to those inoculations, and so we really need the senior center to be open as soon as possible, and I know because you care about the senior center that you will consider our needs as a senior center. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to speak, Lynn and Joyce, they just took words right out of my mouth. The Lakeview Center does mean a lot to the elder of our community, that's the only means sometimes for them to get out of their house. We have map mobility that drives a few people there that doesn't drive. Myself, right now, I'm delivering meals to some that can't, can't make it, you know. So I have a list here of twenty-four activities that takes place at the Lakeview Center, and we need that building renovated, up-to-date codes and everything, so like Joyce says, she's very well spoken, you know, person, and it means a lot to the seniors, you know, so I'm advocating for them, and on your mercy, get that building fixed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, excuse me, one other thing, we do have two of the teachers here, Lynn and Carol, Tai Chi, and this lady here, she does martial, martial yoga, exercise program.
Ms. McKay, Nancy.
Hello, my name is Nancy McKay, and I live at one zero three South Park Lane. I've been a resident of Black Mountain, gosh, since two thousand, maybe, I think it was two thousand, except when I had a brain glitch and moved to Portland, Oregon for two years. I came back and I live in a different house now, but I looked up our two thousand twenty-three census and found out, I think this fact is right, forty percent of our population in Black Mountain is sixty years of age and older. Loneliness is an epidemic in the United States. Socialization is incredibly important, especially to older people like me. I am not time, I am time limited, all right? I'm going to be eighty this year, and I just know that since our time is limited, we can't wait two years to have the senior center come back to us. So I hope you can do everything in your power to either renovate the existing building. I'm sure that there are structural engineers that can help with the foundation, but I just think it's extremely important to put this as one of the top priorities in this town, and I thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Carol Schneider, and I live at two ten Ninth Street. My husband and I have been residents here for fifteen years. I am also very much involved in the senior citizen, both as a participant and an instructor. There are a few things that are very important to a healthy lifestyle, and one of them is exercise. One of the things that we offer at the senior center is exercise classes for our body. We have Tai Chi, we have Sid to Pufit, we have volleyball, we have strength training classes. These are all important aspects of healthy living. We also offer a lot of classes. We also offer a lot of classes to strengthen our minds by playing card games, and we want to keep that up. I want to thank you for anything you can do for us to bring our senior citizen back up and running. We would really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Schneider.
My name is Jim Schneider at 210 Ninth Street. As my wife said, we've been here 15 years. They've been very good years. We were not home when the hurricane hit, and I'm thankful for that, but we understand that there was a lot of good help from the town and the other agencies that protected ourselves. Thank you for that. I just rise to second, what has been said about the senior center. Socialization is paramount. We talk about different people after they might lose a spouse, they kind of stay at home. It takes some effort to encourage them to get out to the senior center. They take tentative steps to do that, and when things work out well, they show up Monday through Friday. That, of course, is not possible right now. Please put the priority where it needs to be. And that's, that's my talk.
Are there any other communications from the staff or council members? That was it? Oh, sorry, what else? If I like to speak, just didn't get the attorney on the list.
Excuse me, I didn't sign up, but may I speak momentarily?
Yes, come on out there.
Thank you.
My name is Fei Yi. I live at 620 Acelia Avenue. I moved here as a renter in 2015 and was lucky to be able to barely buy a house in I moved away for three years and to Portland, Oregon as well, and I'm so delighted that I have moved back with my husband, who was the reason I moved. He agreed to come here because he decided he liked it here better than Portland, too. Anyway, I was, we moved back here in the middle of October, basically the day the electricity came on. So we missed a lot of the excitement, although all the code red emergency notifications weren't very well. I've had them on my phone all these years. So what I really want to say is something kind of related more to, I guess, citizen rights and the right to assemble. And, and to say that we're living in unsettled times. I was personally really distressed by the pardon of essentially everyone who engaged in actions at the Capitol. And, and I realize a lot of that was kind of a group kind of mob, almost frenzy, but it was not very good behavior. I worked my whole career as a government employee for California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection, as a firefighter to start, and then as a forester who continued going as over to major fires in California. You know, there's always risks involved in that, but we had a lot of training, and so it was a job that I felt comfortable doing. A job that I have personally as a citizen in this country is to be able to engage in demonstrations when I'm not happy with the way that the government behaves or acts. I personally plan on being nonviolent. I have some fears about doing that. I think the right to assembly is something that, is something that makes me feel uncomfortable. And I want to say that I was totally astonished by how well and how well-trained the police department was here and how much they've been working on that sort of thing. And I would like to say that I hope that in light of how things are, that they continue to do a lot of training and crowd management and all of that stuff so that we can all feel safe when we're exercising our rights in public.
Thank you. That's your time. Thank you so much. Is there anything else? Any communication from the staff?
So Vice Mayor Patilla, this will be, I'll go ahead and introduce Travis Keever with Gould Killian. They are our auditing firm, and he is going to do the presentation of our most recent town audit. Thank you, Travis.
Thank you, good evening, everybody. If you want to set that timeline, I'll see if I can get that in pretty much. No, I will try to be brief, though. We appreciate you allowing us to serve as your auditors once again for FY25. This is the third consecutive year that our firm has been the town's auditor, and we always appreciate the opportunity to serve the town. I'd also thank Tammy and the staff of the finance department for their hard work and cooperation in completing the audit. As usual, all of the town staff was incredibly responsive and accommodating and shown a tremendous level of professionalism to get through what's a pretty arduous task with these financial statement audits, and so we appreciate that very much. My presentation is going to be brief, and it'll mostly cover the two audit reports that are included in the annual comprehensive financial report that we issued back in late November. So the objective of an audit is to provide reasonable, not absolute, assurance that your financial statements are fairly stated in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. An audit includes examining evidence on a test basis to support the amounts of disclosures in the financial statements, using professional judgment, and evaluating management's accounting policies and estimates. The financial statements are the responsibility of management through the town's financial statements. Our job is to issue an opinion on those numbers. We issued an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, or a clean opinion. We also, as part of the requirements of governmental audit standards, required to document the key internal controls that the town has in place and then verify that those controls are implemented. We do that in a number of ways. We walk through various processes with staff. We review samples of expenditures, looking for proper authorization, purchase orders, budgetary compliance, things of that nature. We also review a sample of payroll expenditures, looking for things like approved pay rates, payroll expense compared to budget. And so while we don't conduct a full internal control review or look at anywhere close to every transaction, we do review a statistically valid sample to give us a reasonably high confidence level that the town's key internal controls are functioning as they are intended. And after all that work, we noted no material weaknesses in the town's internal control over financial reporting. So to sum up that mouthful, that's a clean audit opinion and no material weaknesses in internal control. So that's about as, as good a report as I can give as far as that goes. Now, the LGC has a program, they started a few years ago, it's a benchmarking program. They look at a lot of key performance indicators that kind of come out of the report that we prepare. If any of the benchmarks or KPIs or the metrics that they've laid out are flagged and we have to talk about in a public meeting, you guys.
Can you tell people what the LGC is?
Yeah, the Local Government Commission. Sorry, that's the state agency that is, is tasked with overseeing local government So you guys had two of those benchmarks get triggered this year. You had expenditures in excess of appropriations in the golf fund. This was a one-off kind of event related to leasing some new equipment. The town approved the equipment lease. We just didn't amend the budget ordinance related to that lease, so that shouldn't recur in the future. Again, this is kind of a one-off occurrence. You also had a deficit fund balance of about $66,000 in the grant fund, which appeared to just be related to the timing of some funding coming in versus when the expenditures went out, so that should, should also resolve itself in FY25. So those are both pretty minor, in my opinion. So I'll give a few financial statistics. Ignore where it says FY23 right there, these are FY24 statistics. The town has eight governmental funds, including the general fund. You got total assets of about 10, 10.1 million, total revenues of about 10.4 million, and total expenditures of just a little over 9 million. You have two proprietary funds, Water and Sewer Fund and the Golf Fund. Total assets at June 30, 2024 were 13 and a half million, total revenues of 3.7 million, and total expenditures excluding depreciation of about 2.8 million.
Just so people know, this is fiscal, this ended in June 2024.
Correct.
So a lot changed after that. So I just want to make sure, you're like, big numbers.
Yeah, and this, this does not include any of the hurricane-related financial stuff. That'll be, that'll be this time next year. This is a pie chart showing a breakdown of general fund revenues. Like most municipalities in the state around this size, the majority of your general fund revenue comes from adware or property taxes and local option sales tax. Based on that, this chart, your adware taxes make up about 5 and a half million or 53% of your revenue. The other taxes and licenses column, which is the purple slice there, is 2 and a half million, that's almost all local option sales tax. So between those two, we're looking at 76 or 77% of your revenue. On the expense side, as we would expect, public safety is the largest expense of 3.3 billion, that's about a third of your general fund. And of course, that's primarily the police department, the fire department's accounted for in its own fund. The next two biggest ones are your, your general government operations, which of course is, is finance, human resources, town planning, that sort of thing, is at 1.6 million, and in your streets, public works is about 1.7 million.
Excuse me, is that public safety third? Is that in line with most, what you typically see in most municipalities?
Yeah, it's pretty close. I mean, public safety is the biggest for all municipalities around this size. As far as in the general fund, municipalities that include the fire department is usually kind of over half, around 50% or a little more, since the county makes us split that out. It falls, yeah, I'd say that's mine. This chart shows your fund balance over time, total fund balance and available fund balance. Of course, it took a dip in FY24. That was sort of a planned expenditure of some ARPA funds that you guys were, were sitting on in FY24. So we dropped a little over a million dollars that year. Available fund balance went down basically the same amount, which is kind of what we would expect.
So maybe we could tell them what ARPA funds are? Just say that.
American Rescue Plan Act.
So.
COVID money.
COVID money.
Just trying to be the translator here. So it was 2.6 million that we got in 2020, 2021?
That's probably pretty close.
And we have, oh, just like 50 million dollars we wanted to spend with it, so a lot of hard choices had to be made, but one of them that did get done was the dam repair. So. So when we're throwing around numbers like ARPA money and stuff, that's what that was, and the dam repair was that expenditure.
Up through FY23, it took a little bit of a dip this year. Fund balance stayed down a little bit. The bigger reason for the dip is because your expenditures went up. That includes transfers, which is some of that ARPA money going to other funds. So if you look at that as a, as a math equation, the expenditures, which is the denominator of that equation, just got bigger, which, which means that, that percentage went down. So again, as that ARPA money kind of dwindles and expenditures get back, would have gotten back to normal. We would have seen that come back. Who knows what it's going to look like next year?
But how much does, what percentage does the state require us to have?
There is no set requirement that they have. If you get below 8%, you'll start getting nasty letters from us.
That's what I was thinking, that we had, that we're, we're still healthy at whatever that is, 45% or something?
Yeah, it's just a, just a shade under 50%. Definitely still healthy. They say 8% is an absolute bare minimum. Towns typically set their own policy. I don't remember by default, and if you guys have a fund interest, 30%? Yeah. So that's, that's where most towns are, that's between three and four months worth of expenditures. That's a pretty good place to be, and you guys are still well above that. But again, we'll, we'll see what happens at number moving forward. This is a little chart showing some statistics of the Water and Sewer Fund. It compares working capital, which of course is your current assets, minus your current liabilities. Of course, positive working capital is a good thing, and you've got money to pay your bills. You guys had about two, 1.9 million working capital. That came down just a little bit because of capital expenditures in FY24 in the water fund. Unrestricted net position came down for the exact same reason. Once an expenditure, once net position becomes capital, it's no longer unrestricted, so that came down a little bit. You had operating income of 160,000. Any amount of operating income in a, in a proprietary fund is good. That's money that can be used to cover debt service payments, capital expenditures, things like that. Your operating revenues were, were pretty flat. Water fees is, is of course what makes up most of that. And you generated 557,000 in cash flow from operating activities, and again, that's cash that can be used for capital and debt. And we had a decrease in debt of about half a million in spite of that positive cash flow from operations, again, because of the capital expenditure in that fund. That, I think, yeah, that's about all I've got. I'll be happy to answer questions if anybody has any.
Last year, you identified a few, I think they're called weaknesses, right? That were really gone, and many of them, I believe, were related to the transition in our financial reporting system. This year, you're just confirming your reporting, no, no weaknesses, so those have all been resolved?
If you don't mind, so Travis, I've been trying to, to speak with the LGC, and I've been unsuccessful for a few weeks, guessing they're busy, like all of us. I did notice, and you, and you don't have to answer this, I just want to make this comment. You show the, the graph of our fund balance that dropped basically due to us expending ARPA funds. So we got penalized for that from the LGC because we used, I guess, excess fund balance, which is something that I did not know that we would be penalized for.
Nobody knew that until this year.
Okay. I was going to say, that's what you told us, the other one knew that until this year.
Yeah, we're, I mean, we're seeing that virtually every government, right? Because everybody did, did the same thing, go to NPLs, the ARPA funds, it kind of sat as unrestricted money. You could, you could take up to 10 million, just well worth of what you guys got, and essentially consider it, it's like sales tax money at that point, right? It's completely unrestricted. So everybody did that, it's sitting in the general fund, and then it gets spent over the course of, of, you know, two or three years. This seemed to be the year where everybody managed to spend all that down, so everybody's fund balance went down. And so anybody that was kind of, kind of anywhere close to the, to the borderline of getting, getting dinged or not, got dinged. So, but it appears they've got a spreadsheet that they, they plug the numbers into and then says yes or no.
So are there any, is there any recourse to appeal that? Because there's repercussions for getting those, for being on that list, right?
Uh, yeah, I mean, they're, so the LGC's arbiter of the list, they're also the ones that would be in charge of any of the repercussions. So I, the way I understand it, the determining factors for being on the list is not very subjective, it's kind of spreadsheet-driven. A lot of their other factors, debt approvals and things like that, are more subjective. So I would, if you run into any problems, kind of lean on that subjectivity. They, they do have some, some wiggle room for the other things they do. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And I'll just say, we had an LGC meeting last week for approval of our $500,000 in debt for the lead service line project. No questions asked, it was approved last week.
Because on a more subjective basis, they did look at your financials and see that, you know, the town appears to have a healthy financial situation. So that's kind of what we're seeing from our side. Anything else? Anybody? Thank you.
Thank you.
So next, you've got some information that's in front of you regarding financials, and this will be extremely exciting, I'm sure, for most of you. Tammy is going to go through, she's got a small PowerPoint just to hit some high points. Happy to answer some questions on the current financial outlook that we are in right now, which isn't terrible. But I will let Tammy talk a little bit more about that, and then answer questions.
You guys are just getting a whole lot of financial information. So I did, I did a couple of things. I did your normal monthly financial report that you'll see in there. I did the breakdown of where we are with expenses and revenue in Hulane. And then I did sort of a quarterly report of where we are overall, just sort of a high-level summary. So the town's totaling the budget is currently $25,299.190. That changes.
Million.
Oh, what did I say?
You said 25,000. That's okay.
That changes whenever we do budget amendments, and those are approved, then your revenue and expenses increase or decrease. The general funds portion of that is about 15.7 million, and it makes up the majority. The revenues collected to date were 6.5, a little over 6.5 million, which is 58.56% of our budget if you take out the appropriate fund balance and transfers that happen. The fire department, they are on track. Their revenues mostly come from Buckham County Fire Tax Adblock, and that is a set amount that the county sends us every month. And at the end of the year, they sort of settle up. If they got extra, they send us the extra. I've never seen it been less than what they anticipated. And your planning and departmental services revenue, they're around 60,000, 61,000 less in the prior year. That is mostly due to the restrictions, and we had to suspend collections and permits fees during Hulane. So if those don't come back, we will probably look at quite a significant amount of lost revenue from that event. And the water fund is also in the same boat. They're showing a decrease of about 150,000, and we were not able to charge for about three weeks of water. Everyone was about, and that was about $180,000 of lost revenue. So that also affects, because we didn't do, we didn't do disconnections or late fees for four months. So all that revenue is coming down also.
Just so I understand, the water fund has to be self-supporting, correct? So if it's got a shortfall, we have to make it up. I mean, normally, they would be paying their own way, but yeah, it's okay.
We have to use our water fund balance, our water fund fund balance.
And they sort of, if we have to transfer money from the general fund, which we hopefully should not have to do, the LGC frowns on that. It's not as bad as the general fund sending it to the water fund, as the water fund sending it to the general fund. But they do not like you to do either one of those.
What is the water fund fund balance?
Oh, man. My paper's.
Travis, I think Travis just ended up there. It's pretty, I mean, it's, it's over, I think it's over a million dollars.
So a deficit of 180,000 or something would not.
It shouldn't have affected that much. The stormwater fund revenues seem to be on track. Those look good. Didn't see too much of a difference, and don't anticipate too much of a difference in those. We might be affected by properties that are no longer here or those type of things. At this point, I do not know those amounts. I do not know those totals. That would be Buckham County tax collector that would advise us on those. The way the population has grown in the past, and with the normal increase in property values, it might offset any type of loss we may have come tax year and budgeting for those funds. With those, and when I find out something from Buckham County, I'll pass it along to you guys. The next one is just an overall summary of our categories of revenue and expenses for the general fund. You can see by that that, you know, our revenue, that 41% is different in the front, because that includes the appropriate fund balance and transfers, and that total expenses are down 38%. We're not spending anything really out of our normal expense accounts. A lot of it's Hulane right now. So our normal expenses are below what they are normally at this time. The revenue from the general fund is showing almost a $2 million difference. And that is basically because of the timing of your internal governmental funds and restrictive income. So your property, your sales tax that comes from the state, the local sales tax, there's a three-month lag in it. Your property taxes is a month lag. The, all the different funding that comes from the state, that's all delayed. So if you look at the same point of time, we haven't got those revenues that are showing at last fiscal year '24 for January. We haven't got those yet. So it'll be a couple of months down the road. But we have to, when we do get them, we have to show that they were for those months. So that's where that comes from. Everything else was pretty on track. Investment income is a little bit down, and that's because we don't have quite as much money in our NC CMT investment account as we did. We are not able to provide any of the recreation activities. We're not happening for a while, and will not happen for a while. So those will be down. Your, the recycling seemed to be on par. That one was pretty close to normal. Remember what else? I think it was mostly like the pool and the rec and Lakeview and all those types of sales and services. It's called the deficit there. Here's our property tax collection year-over-year. Property tax collection for '25 is higher than the same point last year, April, December, since we didn't have January numbers yet. It's about a 5.9% increase over the prior year. And that comes from us raising the tax rates, most likely. But we are still on track. I don't see any concerns in us reaching our budget number or not collecting like we normally do. There's that local option sales tax comparison. That has dropped. It could be partially due to Hulane, because you'll see it dropped off in September, October. But that is a trend that's been seen across the state. So it might just be dropping because everybody's not spending as much as they were post-ARPA times or COVID times when we saw that huge increase. And it might be just going back down to a sort of a normal rate. We'll have to watch that to see how that plays out. But I don't, I think we'll still be online for budget amounts on the end of the year. So here's your budget to actual expenses by the fund. All of them are pretty much on track of where they should be. Some of them, it's timing issues, and you might have a lot of the expenses that they do at the beginning of the year. They might not order their capital law at the beginning of the year, or they might have debt payments that are due at specific times. So a lot of the differences you see will be because of that. I think, you know, expense-wise, we are in pretty good shape. Here's the budget to actual expenses by individual departments. And you can see everybody's pretty, you know, staying around that 50, 60% range, which I would expect. Current year-to-prior year expenses for the general fund, that shows where we're down just a little bit from the prior year. And that's all for that part. Any questions? Comments?
This is, this is just crucial information because budget season's starting. It's pretty critical, you know, everybody knows this. But it's crucial that we know what's going on, because we get a lot of new, we'll have a lot of new information and a lot of hard choices to make, so it's good to have this.
I did have, I provided you guys with the Hulane summary of the revenue and expenses to date. I mean, we have budget for the expenses. To date, we have spent a little over 1.6 million in actual expenses due to Hulane. We've gotten in 3.1 million. Majority of that's been insurance proceeds. We've got 860,000 from FEMA for emergency expedited expenses. That was half of what we submitted. They send you half of it expedited, the rest of it, you sort of have to work out. We got sending all the receipts and all the backup and prove that we are spending the money the correct way. So I'm not really sure when we will get more of that. I know you can do more than one emergency expedited submission, but you only have so much time to do those. Is there any questions about any of those items?
We're still waiting on just 3 million, right, from the insurance? Is that right?
Maybe a little bit more.
Yeah.
Not a lot.
Do we have any timeline on when that will?
We're getting checks in pretty regularly for the equipment and the vehicles as they assess those, the buildings. They sent us half of the amount for the buildings. The rest, I believe it was half, I'm pretty sure it was half. They sent the rest. That will come after they finish assessing all the properties and give us an amount. But there's only, we can, we can only, we only get so much for the buildings. And then the equipment and vehicles follows under a different claim.
So for the equipment and vehicles, when we get that money in, are we, are we going ahead and ordering a replacement, or?
We have some stuff, yes. We have it. Now, a lot of this will be things that we talk about probably next week. Because you get money for a replacement, but that replacement cost is more out, so you don't get full now.
Right. Okay.
Basically, based on what it's worth, and, you know, it's not the same.
As buying.
Any other questions, comments? I will mention that the total available fund balance as a percentage of the actual expenses is 21%, which makes me not feel as nervous anymore. For a while, it was, it was really low because of all the money we were having to put out and not have any come in on Hulane. But we are getting better every day, so that makes me sleep a little bit better at night.
It's a lot to digest. Thank you for preparing all of that today.
If you don't have questions as you look through it, feel free to let, give me a buzz or send me an email.
Come up with a lot of details in your report. I didn't want to stay here all night.
Thank you, Tammy. Thanks. All right, next item will be item five, which will be our consent agenda. Item 5A will be adoption of meeting minutes from December the 5th and the 9th of 2024, as well as January the 9th and the 13th of 2025. 5B will be your tax collector's report. 5C is a resolution to partner with Warren Wilson College, Fern Leaf, and Swannano Grassroots Alliance in applying for the Climate Resilience Funds Community-Based Climate Services Initiative Grant. So this grant has to be applied for in conjunction with at least one partner group. We've got multiple here. So at the end of the day, we don't know if we'll get this funding, but if we do, this will put a lot of things in motion. You know, we had budgeted this year to do a climate action plan, although I think those funds will probably be needed elsewhere. But this, I think, will be similar to that. Also, we hope that if this grant does get ordered to us, we'll have things coming in such as workshops, different types of trainings, and I think it'll be, at the end of the day, it'll be a good thing for the region if we are successful in getting that grant together.
By seeing that it's a collaboration with Warren Wilson tells me it's a little bit bigger than just our town property, but looking at the Swannano Valley a little more realistically.
Great. Item 5D will be consideration of budget amendments, and there are quite a few of those. 5E, we need to pull off, and that will be for another, for another meeting later on here this year. And that is your consent agenda. Would be 5A, B, C, and D.
Josh, I did wonder if you could give kind of just a high-level overview of the budget amendments to a little more hefty than our usual monthly budget amendment list.
I'm going to ask our finance director, Tammy, to come back up and talk to you about that.
Thank you, surprise. Not in the weeds, just.
Some of these is just reallocation of expenses. There are actually budget adjustments and not amendments, so plus the overall budget not changed. So first budget amendment would be the Veterans Park fencing, which you had approved in your December, or January, in your January board meeting. And so that's just recognizing that that was approved and putting that money, we transferred it out of the general fund into Hulane, so we could pay for those repairs. We have the radio tower removal for contract services. We actually received the insurance proceeds for that in June of '24, so it sort of rolled into the fire department's fund balance at the end of that year. So this is taking it out of their fund balance and paying for the actual removal of that tower.
Yeah, I mean, we really don't need to go line by line, but if folks are looking through this packet and saying, oh, my gosh, why, you know, why is this so huge this month? This is where we're starting to see a lot of the impacts from Hulane. They've got all the insurance. Helene. They've got all the insurance claims coming in, that, that kind of thing.
Yeah, and that's, you know, the, the biggest one on here was the insurance. I mean, the longest one was the insurance claims where we'd gotten all of those individual claims. And so we had to recognize that revenue so we could actually spend that money on replacements or repairs, whichever it may be.
And, and I'll say, you know, you'll, you'll continue to see this. That will be, things will be on budget adjustments or budget amendments, but that will be the norm for a little bit. At least until we get to the next budget, which is not far away.
Thank you.
Any other discussion about the consent agenda? I think we can motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I would move to approve the consent agenda as it was amended.
All in favor?
Aye.
Of a hearing, we do not have any for this month. Don't have any unfinished, unfinished business on this agenda, and this is the second option for citizen comments.
Anyone else have any comments that they want to speak about concerning the present agenda?
All right, new business nine A will be consideration of the adoption of the Dr. John Wilson Community Garden Site Plan. Mr. Josh Henderson, Recreation Parks Director.
All right, so in this current budget, we budgeted to do a site plan for the community garden. If you call out, in two thousand twenty-two, we completed a master plan for the recreation department. And then in February of last year, we did a strategic plan for the community garden. So some of the goals that were outlined in the master plan and the strategic plan called for a site plan. And this was completed in September. Unfortunately, we're just now getting to it despite all the things that we have been through. And so we're gonna go over that, but I wanted to introduce Leonora. She is our new community garden manager. And I'm gonna let her walk you through this, she has the knowledge, so.
Hello, members of town council. First, I'd just like to say hello and introduce myself and thank you for your service throughout Hurricane Helene and beyond. Thank you for investing in the community garden. My name is Leonora Stephnile, and in December of two thousand twenty-four, I took over as garden manager for the Dr. John Wilson Community Garden. And in the short time I've been manager, it's clear how important this is to so many people in this community. And also just how innovative it is as a project because, because of the town, the support the town provides, it's really able to be at this level of professionalism and service that it's greater than other community gardening projects that I've been a part of. So I would really just like to thank you for investing in us and in me. So a little background on me, I bring fifteen years of sustainable agriculture experience to this position. I've managed small scale vegetable farms, cut flower farms. I've also done horticultural research and I have experience with organic landscaping and landscaping with native plants. Starting in garden, community garden was sort of the genesis of my career, so this position very much feels like a homecoming. And I've lived in Western North Carolina for ten years, and I very much consider this River Valley home, so thank you for this opportunity. Please keep in mind throughout this presentation that this conceptual site plan was created before I came on board, and it was also created before Hurricane Helene. So I'm, I'm a little new to the party, and there's some changes that we're probably going to have to do, make to the plan as a result of Hurricane Helene. The presentation today is for the, for the council to approve this map and this plan, which includes some new additions to the community garden that the community came together and decided were needed. And however, you know, when we do these new projects and when is still uncertain, but we just wanted to go ahead and get y'all's approval. Okay, so quick agenda, we'll go over the community garden for anyone who's watching who may be new to the project. We'll go over what the conceptual site plan is and the impact of Hurricane Helene on the plan. And we're also going to touch on some infrastructure priorities for two thousand twenty-five. So current garden projects and programs, we have rental plots that community members can just, you know, sign up in spring to rent and they can garden whatever they choose and be a part of the community that way. We also have garden beds where we donate all the food that we grow, which is what I manage the growth of with interns and volunteers. And we donate that food to Bowney and Soul and some other local food banks. We also have volunteer workdays, internships, educational workshops where we bring local experts in from the community to teach on various gardening related things. We also have a community composting program where anyone from the community can drop off food, waste to divert from the landfill, which we then turn into compost, which we use in the garden. We have a food forest, basically an orchard throughout the golf course that we manage the production of. And then we also have a role in invasive species management in the woods that are adjacent to the garden, between the garden and the Swananoa River Valley. And I was just out there today with some Warren Wilson students clearing out English IV in the credits, so. All very active programs. So some impacts the town makes through the community garden. We reduce waste through composting, we do a lot of education, we provide access to local healthy food, we provide space for building community, maintaining beauty and ecology, and also bringing pride for residents and attracting visitors. And I've met several gardeners who said when they were deciding where to live in Western North Carolina, they chose Black Mountain for the community garden. So this is definitely a highlight of this community. So the purpose for the community gardens conceptual site plan. So as Josh said, recreation master plan was adopted in two thousand twenty-two, recommended a site-specific plan for the Dr. John Wilson Community Garden. You know, recreate, this is, you know, I work for Parks and Rec, so recreation is a refreshment of strength and spirits after work, and that is definitely something that the community garden provides. Here's the line item from the ten-year strategic plan from the garden that basically, you know, this is the creating the site plan to guide future structures and hardscaping. Long-term goals include bathrooms, a greenhouse and glass house, and a new facility. Result is supporting document for long-term efforts. Conceptual site plan is in development at the time of this document. So this is what we're drawing from and this is what we've drawn out and are presenting today. So the conceptual site plan, the Dr. John Wilson Community Garden, basically renamed the conceptual site plan. And just another reminder that this was created before Helene, so it's a working document. And so a couple of things that do. So the existing metal roof shed should be replaced with a new barn-type structure and include an office and a classroom. An accessible walking path should be constructed from the parking area, and water and sewer service should be extended to the site. So currently, we don't have any of those things and would very much like them. So. So here's the map that was developed by Craig Siska, who is a landscape site planner and architect and also an avid gardener. Thank you so much, Craig. And basically, there's, it's, it may be a little hard to see.
Yeah, that doesn't work on that screen.
It doesn't? Oh, yeah, okay. So basically, you know, you can see that the majority of the garden is obviously in garden beds. And what we're going to be focusing in on here in this meeting is what is currently not there already.
So where to zoom in, kind of pan around, would that be helpful to you?
I think some of the slides are a little.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, okay, great.
Yes, stay tuned. All right, so this water source that I just clicked is, was currently hooked up to a system that used water sourced from the Swananoa River. And something that we want to do in two thousand twenty-five as soon as possible is actually have water, the water source for that spigot be coming from a city water hookup, which we've heard from Public Works is likely going to happen soon. And this, the next new design feature is a glass house where we can grow out our own starts and do a lot more winter gardening. And at the edge of that, there would be a potting shed where we can do all of our seeding and seed trays, which, you know, is a, a big upfront cost, but will save the garden thousands in, from not having to buy seed starts like we have been doing. There's a new parking area. Right now, there's really only space for a couple of cars down there. And this is, you know, the only way someone with a disability can experience the garden is this parking area, so we want to expand that. The new, there's currently a barn footprint that this new, this barn that I've circled would replace. And basically, we want to, you know, not just have it be a whole barn, but be an actual classroom where we could host large educational groups. We could do more indoor projects such as seed saving and seed storage. We could have the electrical hookups that we would need to maybe have a fridge out there, which would help us, you know, keep produce on site, perhaps for distribution or just, you know, until we can get it to a distributor. Or for events, it would be wonderful to have a kitchen in this building and potentially an office for the manager. So this has definitely been a long-term dream of the community garden for many years. And I'm sure some people here have already heard about the proposal for the new building. In front of the building, there would be a little arbor where we could grow grapevines or something to, you know, provide shade and beauty for when you first approach the garden. You know, meeting with a lot of groups, that area is really prime. You know, you can see the garden beds, you can see the mountains, you can, it's really kind of the heart of the garden. So just, you know, adding beauty and shade would be helpful. And then there's another outdoor shade setting for maybe doing larger events. Like I love farm-to-table dinners where we, you know, the garden department with a chef, and maybe it could be under this sort of larger shade structure. And then there's just another arbor entrance, kind of distinguishing the garden as you're approaching it from the greenway. It's like, you know, this is what we are, and it's really professional and beautiful, and this is how you enter, so. And then there would be a couple more arbor entrances here and here. This is on the eastern side of the garden that rivers the Swananoa. And a few other items included in the plan would be more signage throughout the garden. You know, wanting to communicate more about how the garden's history and what we do out here and why this is important, and more signage around the community composting program, et cetera. The city water hookup is definitely something that's very much needed now. There's, you know, nowhere where I can fill up a water bottle at the, even at the garden. I, no one can wash their hands, no one can wash off their produce, so that's really important. And then the, a produce washing station, which I'll talk more about later in the presentation. Restrooms, right now, there's just a poor John out there, so it'd be great to have some more professional, comfortable restrooms. Solar panels for electricity in the barn in the main building. I think that's, the community feels very important that, you know, if possible, we can be kind of an example for all different types of sustainable technologies. So it would be wonderful to have solar panels as our source of power. And those are some, and those are probably going to be available through a grant. There's a lot of grants for agricultural-related projects. I've worked on one of them, so that's something we'd like to invest in for the future. And then also more outdoor sitting areas. So Hurricane Helene, in, you know, in many ways, it demonstrated how important access to any locally produced renewable resource is. I know that back when Helene hit, I was still a farm manager, and I was donating hundreds of pounds of fresh produce to citizens and to people who were preparing food for the community. And a lot of the, and, you know, the once pretzel kitchen who was cooking for Swananoa said, you're the only, you know, you're, this is the only vegetables we've gotten all day and early on. I mean, you know, when the supply run is cut off, projects like this are made. So, you know, it makes us aware as community how valuable it is. The other thing that's great about the garden is that we're growing food using compost that is largely created in part from kitchen scraps brought from all over town. And so the food grown in the garden is a true example of a renewable resource. We've closed this gap in that we don't have waste just going to a landfill. It's actually being reinvested and growing more food. So in two thousand twenty-five, Josh and I hope to showcase the community garden at the North Carolina Parks and Recreation Association's annual conference. And we'd like to, you know, show how this is a model of a successful town-supported community garden. Infrastructure improvements in the garden. So right now, the biggest impact that Hurricane Helene had on us is that it basically questioned this, you know, the safety of the water for use as irrigation. And, you know, this is a question, this is a question a lot of farmers are facing and struggling with. And given our scale, it is feasible to, you know, dig a well that could provide for the garden. So securing an ongoing year-round source of irrigation water, water that does not source surface water from the Swananoa River is incredibly important. That's not to say that the Swananoa River is unsafe to be used as irrigation water, but I think that we're just, we're very much still in the picture of harvesting data and understanding what are the safety concerns and how can the water be used safely? And that can take years, so in the meantime, we really need an alternate source. Providing potable water for drinking, hand washing, and for washing produce, and that would come from the city water line that's in the works. The other infrastructure improvement that's very important to me is in having greater emphasis on food safety. And we want to install a wash-and-pack station for washing produce before donating our food to food distribution partners. And we also want to make, repairing some of the things in the barn to address safety, safety issues apparently for this year. So basically, the updates due to Helene up there talks about a filtration system that would be, you know, that was designed to be used with, in front of, ahead of the pump that was pumping water from the Swananoa River, which you can increase. We don't want to use the Swananoa River for irrigation anymore. And so, you know, that's not really something we're looking into anymore. We also want to perhaps install the wellhead here, which is pretty much as far away as, and uphill as we can get so that, you know, if there were another major flood event, we wouldn't have to, you know, the wellhead wouldn't be flooded. And this way, it could also maybe service like a bathroom area that was more on the disc golf course side and not on the garden side. And then updates for. And then updates for food safety, the wash-and-pack station would go here besides the barn or building structure. And then the idea with the wash-and-pack station is that city water comes to it, we harvest all the water that we use for wash-and-pack in a tank, and then we can passively water some of the garden beds nearby. So we're just, you know, making sure to save every bit of water and use it as much as we possibly can. So just a little bit about why irrigation in the community garden is so important. So without irrigation during dry periods, we can only grow about 50% of the food that we normally grow, especially in summer. Many crops will produce little to no food without irrigation. Irrigation helps plants stay optimally healthy, which is a staple for organic growing. The healthier the plant is, the more resistant it is to plants and diseases. Moist soil is more microbial-y active, which in turn increases plants' ability to take up nutrients that they need to grow and bear fruit. This is especially, you know, the case with vegetable crops such as tomatoes and squash and things where you're eating the actual fruit. Many gardeners are, in our community garden, are older and have trouble hauling water and doing houses around, so as much as we can automate a drip irrigation system, that's optimal, and it would be easier to do that with a well. We need a regular watering system that irrigates all the garden beds with minimal intervention. And next month, we will present a funding opportunity that we hope to secure that will enable us to install an agricultural capacity well. So a little bit about food safety and the why of, you know, why historically we haven't washed produce and, you know, coming from like a commercial agriculture background, I believe it's very important. And why is because we're distributing food to the public. All soil should be washed off the edible portions. This helps keep soil of hormone pathogens from potentially infecting anyone. Most gardeners are pretty healthy and robust, but as soon as we're giving dope, like produce away to the community, we may be giving it to the immunocompromised. We may be giving it to the very young or the very old or, you know, people who are pregnant. So we want to make sure that that food is safe. And this is standard practice at other community farms that we can compare ourselves to in scale, such as Root Cause Farm in Fairview and Alida Home in West Asheville. A basic wash-and-pack station is relatively inexpensive. We have money in our current budget to probably cover the cost of the basic model. And ideally, city water is the water source because it's regularly tested and treated. However, a well could also be the source, just as long as we're doing the yearly testing. We are working with a food safety specialist with NCSU to have the best location and design for the wash-and-pack station. And Bounty and Sol, who's our main distribution partner, now requires all its farmer and grower partners to wash produce prior to handoff. So, you know, if we want to, there's ways we can wash the produce without having it out in, the station out in the garden, but it's obviously going to be much easier if we can wash it. Bounty and Sol picks it up the way it's been done, we're just, you know, adding stuff and washing it. And this is a common practice in commercial farming, and it adds, and having this water, you know, available, this water and washing station available, it adds value to the garden offerings for gardeners who rent plots, you know, essentially everyone who's renting a plot is a customer. So, you know, we always want to add value to what we're offering. And yeah, just a reminder that we're, this is such an amazing model for something really innovative and special, and it really touches a lot of people's hearts and lives in the community. So thank you.
Did you tell us from that conferences?
December 3rd?
Yeah.
Was it held this year? I used to go to that.
NCRBA?
Yeah.
It's going to be in Charleston this year.
Yeah.
Well, we may all want to go.
Yeah.
Well, I appreciated that presentation, because it's been a while since we even looked at the plan and all of that. Welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions?
So we are, we are moving forward with water hookup now from the city?
It's a, I mean, this will be a, this is a service line. This really is not for irrigation at this point. This is more for.
Yeah, there'll be, there'll be no irrigation from city water.
Okay.
Simply just, one of the reasons to put a water line in, it's multifaceted, really. I mean, talking about the future, having drinking water there is big. I mean, right now, we're just taking jugs from Lakeview over there to fill up their drinking water, but to also, you know, look to the future, putting in bathrooms down there, and having, having that water already there will make that a lot easier. And just like Lita Norris said with the, the washing of the produce, you know, in years past, we haven't been required by the, the organization we donate food to, to have it washed, but now we are. So we're trying to get ahead of that so that we're not, you know, essentially wasting our effort by not being able to get the food out to the partners that we have.
Great.
So do I motion to adopt the site plan as presented?
I'm going to adopt the site plan for the community garden as presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hang out. Josh, the next item, 9B will be.
Acceptance of donation for the purchase of fencing on Veterans Park Field 1 and the purchase of new bleachers at Veterans Park.
So, you know, in our January meeting, you guys approved the fencing for three of the four fields at Veterans Park with the contractor being Asheville Fence. The quotes that I presented in January laid out the, the pricing for all four fields. So the Presbyterian Church has come to us and, and the baseball organization and wants to cover the cost of that fourth field. Having the work done at the same time that the other three fields are done is a cost savings in the long run. So we wanted to get this on the agenda so that you guys could accept this donation, and then next month, we'll bring you a, a budget amendment to actually, you know, accept these funds. But they're gonna, they're gonna fund the $43,000 to go towards the new fencing, and then the remainder of that funds will be used to buy new bleachers out there for the baseball season. So it's, I mean, it's a great opportunity, I, you know, after all we've been through, I think it will be, it'll be awesome. They've already started work out there on the fields, so go by there and take a look at it, but it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be really nice. And I'll, I'll have another, there's gonna be another donation next month for Veterans Park. I spoke with the, the contractor with Asheville Fence, he had the president of the company out there, and they're, they want to put in new split rail fence out there and put a fence around the playground, they're gonna donate that work as well, so. Lot of, lot of awesome things happening at Veterans Park right now.
Yeah, I'm, I'm very grateful that we're continuing to see a lot of support for the fields and to, from Black Mountain Presbyterian Church for, for donating this money. I, there was grading that needed to be done on that field too, is that right?
This, none of, none of this donation covers any of the physical field work, it's simply the fencing. I, I don't know what the timeline will be on, on getting that Field 1 ready, in terms of the infield and the outfield and that sort of thing.
But this will get us further ahead.
At least, at least when the, when the funds are available to, to refurbish that field, the fencing will be done, and that'll be the last piece.
Great. Rob would move to accept the donated funds for Field 1 fencing and bleachers. Is that in favor?
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I just gotta say, I'm grateful I am to Black Mountain Presbyterian Church, because they are such a resource for, in so many ways. This is another example.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Josh.
So your, your next item is 9C, consideration of reinstating development fees. And this is something that we've talked about a few minutes ago, we were talking about finances. As it currently stands, we are short, we've lost about $118,000 in revenue due to the suspension of our development fees. Of that, about $38,000 is permits related to disaster recovery. The other $80,000 is for new builds or other permits, not related to the disaster recovery. What we have got in front of you is some different options. I would think, as far as staff is concerned, we would recommend that you do reinstate some development fees for anything not related to recovery. I think we, we recognize there are issues with that. We want to be as flexible as we can, but a, as we've been talking tonight, you've seen that we are losing a substantial amount of money in those fees, and we would like to start charging those fees accordingly and not charging folks that are doing work to recover. Now, there's a bunch of different ways we could do that. I think that seems to be a simpler way, just to say anybody that's doing development regarding recovery, there's not going to be a development fee, but if you are doing it for new builds or other builds, then it is going to be a fee for that. If you recall, the state did put a halt on all these fees, we could not charge anything, no one could in the state until the end of last calendar year. That is no longer in place, and now folks can chart, can start charging again, could have January 1st of 2025.
That was the case even outside of affected counties?
I'm sorry.
That was the case even outside of affected counties?
Oh, I don't know about that. As far as the affected counties go, there were no, you could not give development fees.
And we initially made the choice to, to extend that in town through June 30th, through all of our fiscal year.
The end of this fiscal year is correct.
So reinstating any of the fees would be coming back on that, which I don't like to do that, but I, I am at this point in favor of reinstating fees for development that's not related to storm damage or storm recovery. I wonder where this makes things messy in our planning department and kind of looking at how we handle pressing that.
Yeah, you know, it's gonna have to be somewhat of an honor system, right? We're gonna have to take, we don't have the time or staff to go out and confirm whether or not this is a recovery rebuild. You know, and I will say, our building inspector did 396 inspections in the month of January. And that's one person. That's 20 inspections a day, every day, all day. We are hiring a part-time person, thankfully, who will be starting soon to help him, but that's, I mean, that's the level of work we have going on in town. And then, of course, that's not all recovery, as you saw, $38,000 of that was recovery, the other 80 is, is, it's just different things.
So in having this option presented, staff feels comfortable kind of navigating that honor system with folks. And I'm just, I'm imagining too, like, new builds where maybe shifted a little bit, and so it's not, they're not dealing damage to the structure, but maybe it affects how, I'm, I'm trying to think there are different scenarios here that would feel like a gray area, and and I don't, I don't want staff to go put in a, in a weird spot if we're not doing our, our due diligence of putting together something really clear.
Well, I would think the application, whatever application we have, we need to add a subcategory for recovery, make the applicant responsible, fill it out. To his point, the honor system is you've truthfully applied for payments, right? And so beyond that, I guess if you go out and do the inspection, I guess there could be, during the inspection process, a questioning of actual representation of the initial intake is totally dependent on the applicant. And just to piggyback on all these fees, these are, this is not a profit-making venture here, these are fees for the cost of services being provided. And so it's to recover things that are, what the town, you know, provides to the citizens, so it's not, I think, a profit for us.
No, and I, yeah, and we can easily look at our budget and see the line item for, you know, the inspection fees never pay for that, I mean, there's never enough to pay for that number, so.
Yeah, like, that's a member very, I, you know, I don't like that we're going back on what was decided. It was decided within the first week after the storm in a moment of panic, when we were hoping to reduce any sort of burden on people who were cleaning up things and, and getting back on their feet. So, you know, I think that now that we have been able to breathe and people have begun to rebuild in non-recovery manner, then, you know, I think, I think it, it makes sense to reinstate for non-recovery efforts. I also just want to acknowledge that I know several people who are just now getting insurance payments and just now fixing roofs, just now repairing basements and that kind of thing. So while that $38,000 amount may look like it's a small percentage, I think that a lot of people are still, they're just not getting the work done. I want to make sure that we're continuing to support them during, during this time of recovery, so I would, I would definitely want to find a way for us to continue to waive those fees.
I would like to look at wording for this, we don't really get into the weeds, I don't know how it's presented here, but, but this would, well, I guess it's a question, not a statement, would it apply to future natural disasters? Would it apply to future?
Well, if someone were.
Flooding or other events? Are we making this specifically named Hurricane Helene storm damage?
I think you probably do in this case, and then you take that case by case as other things happen in the future, would be my suggestion. So you tie this specifically to tropical storm Helene. Otherwise, I think it might get real messy, real quickly.
Yes.
But we would have some existing language if, please, hopefully not, but, you know, if there were an incident that we have to deal with in the future.
So is the consideration to approve that development fees, be reinstated on anything that wasn't Hurricane Helene related?
Yes, yes, sir. And we will, this doesn't need to be in that, but we, we will internally add something to our permits, as Attorney Justice mentioned, where they can check a box that this is recovery-related. Can they do that easily?
Any other comments? Do I hear a motion to approve the?
Your motion would be to, to reinstate all, all, all development fees for development, any development not associated with hurricane.
Hurricane, heli, cover.
Effective.
Tomorrow.
Effective immediately?
I'll make that motion, what you just said.
There you go.
All in favor?
Aye.
Your next item will be, Tammy, can you come back up again? I think this will be brief, we'll make you read all that unless you just really want, really want to. But this would be the amended project ordinance for Hurricane Helene, where we're going to recognize a few more funding, funding sources we've received.
So every time we get more money in, we have to do an amended ordinance, so these will probably be happening almost every month. So we're recognizing the funds received for the transfer in for the repair of the fencing. There was the $860,660 from FEMA. We also have the NC DEQ Infrastructure Technical Assistant Grant. This is sort of piggybacking off of the law that we were doing for the infrastructure. The DEQ offered us grant funding of $200,000 to help with the engineering and design that goes along with that infrastructure law. That was $200,000, and then $659,143 for insurance proceeds received from the NCCMT for vehicles and equipment.
Any discussion? So do I motion to approve the Finance Department's request to accept the funding for the attached resolution, approving the amended grant, project ordinance, and budget amendment as presented and recommended?
So.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Tammy. And I think lastly, on your business portion, it's gonna be. And I think lastly, on your business portion, is going to be a agreement with the Buckingham County TDA, if you will, which is the Tourism Development Authority for our regional wayfinding program. For those of you that aren't aware, we have had a wayfinding program in town for a number of years, quite a long time. County TDA paid for these signs. I don't even know how long ago it's been, right? 15, 20 years?
15 years, yeah.
So these signs are in different places in town?
Well, the first time.
The first time. So I'm going to call attention to one sign that probably everybody has seen at the intersection at CBS and Cragmont Road. You'll see a sign that points to the golf course and different things, Pro Packer Horse. That, those are the types of signs we're talking about. I think there's seven or eight around town, maybe missing a few. But what this is really doing is just stating they're going to be the ones refurbishing those signs. It's their responsibility. This is something that we have been, we've been with them for, since, since the signs came to town a number of years ago. And we just want to make sure that we stay in this agreement and that they're paying to fix the signs and we're not paying to fix the signs. So that's, in a nutshell, that's really it.
I want to add for anyone watching and not looking at the, um, agenda packet also includes, what, Weaverville and Woodford? And this is an updated agreement for everybody.
Yeah, it's, it's most every town in the county. I don't know if Monterey has any, I know the other towns.
They're not named, yeah. It's not just, not just about us.
It's Asheville and it's everywhere.
Yeah.
So do I have a motion?
I move that the town council approve the inter-local agreement as presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
There's two Jamie Matthews's. I just meant two. It's because they don't know how to spell Jamie.
I know.
He doesn't work for the city of Asheville.
Who knew?
Who knew?
Who knew?
Communication from the town attorney and town manager?
Couple of things, we're, I just wanted to call attention to our special meeting next Monday night, 17th, 5:30. Is that correct, Wesley? So it's at 5:30. We'll talk about, um, I don't know if we're gonna have all the information I'd hoped, but we'll do the best we can. We'll talk about financing, maybe how we can move some money around to different places in our existing budget to do certain things with. I will also say, with that, we're going to be submitting our damage inventory to FEMA on Thursday this week, on the 13th. That has now been extended, I don't even know how far out, March, June. They keep extending it, but we want to go ahead and get ours in the queue. We've looked at it long enough. We think we're ready to do that. We had a short meeting with FEMA today that we'll be coming back on Thursday. And also that the state is putting together a package for the affected communities from Helene. Right now, there's $100 million in this package. And it's going to be essentially bridge loan money, kind of like the DEQ did for us. Although $100 million is not going to go far, based on the amount of damages that all the counties in this area received. With that being said, I don't know the stipulations on that. I do know that we've got to have it turned in by the 14th. So we'll meet that deadline and turn it in on the 13th. I don't know terms, I don't know, I just don't know any of that yet. And if I had it, I'd give it to you, but when I do get it, I will give it to you. I'll also say, I know there's some, some talk now with adding another $500 million to that pot of money too, which would be amazing. I'll keep you up to date on that as I hear more as far as that goes. But we do have a closed session tonight, but that's all I have right now.
Josh, with, have you heard anything, any updates with all the changes in regulations coming from the federal government around the lead, um, the lead pipe?
We have not heard anything yet from them on that front.
Okay.
Soon as I hear something, I will let y'all know. But we have not had any communication with the feds about that one. Communication from you?
I have none. Any communication from the council?
I have something. Dan, you have a go?
Feel free.
As Josh mentions, over the next few weeks, we will have a series of meetings where we're going to be talking about funding upcoming projects. I have met with many people, as, as sure everyone else has as well, over the last several weeks. And, and the thing that people just keep driving home is that this is hard, that everything is hard right now. That it's hard locally, it's hard within the state, it's hard nationally. And, um, I just want to say that, uh, you know, we, we, we work to, um, to help do what we can to make things a little bit easier, especially throughout this recovery, whether that's, um, whether that's keeping people safe, investing in that, or, uh, or helping to, to fund, you know, prioritizing what, what people need and what need, people need most. And I appreciate those who came here earlier today to speak about the Senior Center. You know, that type of, um, people voicing their, their needs that we can, and in ways that we can support them, I think is just incredibly valuable. So I just want to encourage anyone and everyone to reach out to us, to call us, email, meet with us. I'm sure we're all eager and able to do that as much as we can, especially as we head into these discussions around prioritization of, of, of recovery projects.
I had a comment and I wrote it out because I wanted to make sure I, I got it right. Um, I wanted to, I'd like to extend my thanks to the Swananoa Valley Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Memorial Corporation for a beautiful inspirational prayer event last Saturday. The work this organization has done for decades has resulted in educational opportunities for young people, raised awareness about important issues, and fostered community building which benefits everyone. They truly lead by example. The event provided for me a reminder how, of how a people who had been denied the rights afforded in the United States Constitution persevered in the face of strong opposition. We can all learn much from that movement as we strive for a more perfect union. That is an ongoing effort. And I appreciate the strength and leadership this group embodies.
And if nothing else, a request we go into closed session, that would be North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A3.
And this is discussed, a matter of false real estate versus George Thatcher at all.
Does there a motion to move it to closed session?
Submit.
All in favor?
Aye.